We'll go ahead and get this council meeting started. Thanks for being here, November 18th. We'll start with Steve Ayers with Lifeline Connected Prayer.
Well, we just thank you for the opportunities to be together. Thank you for the opportunities to be a part of the Village of Hicksville. And Lord, I pray for our leaders and staff. And Lord, I pray that you protect them each and every day. And Lord, give them wisdom and guidance to push us forward and give us the wisdom to follow you in a godly, good way, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think that's coming out of my mouth at all. That's, I think that stopped.
All right, start with roll call, Cheryl, please.
Here.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eglie.
Here.
Approval of November 4th, council meeting minutes. Any questions concerning changes? Make much to approve, hurry.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Very good. You have a bills list in your packet. Any questions?
I do. Oh, AEP on the 13th of November, 6,300, and then the next day, another 85, 81. So, around $15,000. That's really high for this time of year when we're not running UBS or anything. Do we know why we're so high?
Because we, 630883 is a combination of six new bills, well field, I don't know what those are, the veterans, the new one at the park, or the other two.
So, when I show out of you, our normal bill was only 85?
No.
No?
This is my, every month. You asked, have asked me before, but all the six are paid by ACH. The others are all on a bill, one bill. Those are all of the usual bills, but we have them every month.
Okay.
And they're always separate.
I just thought it was high. And JDY excavating the back and jet sewer lines at the fire department. We have state-of-the-art back and jet trucks. So, why can't we get JDY?
I didn't have anybody available to do it. And they were backed up coming through the floors. I don't even know if we got an end small enough to go through that drain line.
Hmm. And then on slug roll offs for nine grand, did we have a blue tank empty to get us through the winter?
Not empty, no.
Are we close to empty?
Probably have.
That won't get us through the winter. What are we going to do about that?
I like to be fun.
You're saying? Okay. And at the wastewater treatment plant, oils, 1,400 bucks. What kind of oil we buying? The generator was already done.
Yeah, these are for all the gearboxes of the ditch. There are five gown pails and some special synthetic oil that those things take.
I guess I'm just not used to us buying them. What are you using to rebuild them?
It's nothing to do with rebuilding. We had one rebuilt. It's called maintenance.
Yeah.
That's what we're not used to.
Yeah, we're not used to that. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Make a motion to pay the bills if nobody else has any questions.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Everly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglie.
Yes.
Boards and commissions, meetings with commission boards, I believe so. Council committee reports, nothing on that, no committees on that. Very good. We're up to administrator's report.
All I have is what's in front of you. I don't have anything else.
Cory, I have a question.
Yes.
On the ADP, instead of waiting installation of the new pole and transformer, is that the pole, you're not putting a pole back at the splash pad, are you? You're doing all that underground?
It's, it's underground now. It's, all the wiring conduit is there, but they got to set another pole by the siren.
By, over by that building where the siren is?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
There's supposed to have been a pad-mounted transformer.
Right.
But they said they couldn't do it. They had to set a pole. So, I did not want a pole, but.
But at least it'll be out of our sight, line of sight.
Yes.
Which will eliminate the one that is in our line of sight currently. That one will be eliminated.
Which one are you talking about?
If you're, if the splash pad's over here, you're looking at one right here.
Now, there's, there's no.
There'll be no poles there.
There's no poles there now around the splash pad.
Okay. No, this is.
There's one over by the sirens, a couple of transformers on it.
Okay. Gotcha.
Any other questions for Cory?
I just have a quick question. Pump house roof replacement. Which pump house?
This is the old wellhouse. It's a little white brick building behind that rock.
Okay.
Had a couple. Couple of estimates did come. One was 7,000, yeah, 854. The other one came in as like 11 grand.
Okay.
I just wondered which pump house in the village.
There's nothing in there that we use, is there?
All the controls for that siren are in there.
I mean, I'm not against putting a roof on it.
It's a solid building.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we ever were to upgrade that siren, we could put one like, it's about 30 grand, to put one like at the fire hall back there. And that building could technically go away, but it is a nice, solid building. Needs a little, needs some TLC, I think, to get a roof on it and potentially skin it or something. It'd be a nice building for storage.
Yep.
Anything else for Cory? Thank you. We're down to solicitor's report of ordinances and resolutions.
Final reading of ordinance 2024-20 by caption only to amend water rates.
Make much to approve.
I will second.
Roll call.
Eglie.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Final reading of ordinance 2024-21 by caption only to amend refuse rates.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Everly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglie.
Yes.
Final reading of ordinance 2024-22 by caption only to amend sewer.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Eglie.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2024-23 by caption only to establish pay ranges in 2025. And second reading of ordinance 2024-25 by caption only annual appropriations. And first reading of ordinance 2024-26 by caption only to amend appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I will vote this is suspend the rules on that one.
Please, Rachel.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglie.
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2024-26 by caption only to amend appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Make motion to suspend the rules. I'll depel.
I'll second. He is voting for it to move.
Roll call.
Everly.
No. Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglie.
Yes.
First reading of resolution 2024-23 by caption only authorizing an easement to AEP Electric for installation of electric facilities and declaring an emergency.
Make motion to suspend that one.
I'll second.
Dissuspend the rules. Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglie.
Yes.
Second and final reading of resolution 2024-23 by caption only authorizing an easement to AEP Electric for installation of electric facilities and declaring an emergency.
So, this was the one from last week that, or the last time we met that we didn't.
Had to rewrite.
We had to rewrite, okay.
I would move motion on it. I'll second.
Roll call.
Eglie.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
All right. A real quick stuff for Rachel. I had reached out to you that I was like last minute, but we have not heard any update on the American Tower contract renewal at all. I reached out, I sent an email out to all the parties on the 24th and asked where we stand, and I didn't get a response. So, I asked Rachel if I could have interceded with their attorneys at Mark and find out, again, waiting too long. They've got the contract back in their hands, needs to be finalized. So, I, I don't know what Rachel's thoughts are on that, but she's getting with Mark. It's just, this is crazy, just to move a road and fight an optic line, so.
But I thought everybody, when the contract was returned to them, I thought it was just all they had to decide and it was over with.
Right. I mean, they've made a couple revisions of it, but nothing major. I mean, nothing at all. So, we can't figure out why it's taken this long. So, but I know it was today I reached out to Rachel and asked her to kind of follow up with Mark and stuff. So, and then, and I think they tried to call.
Yeah, Erica had reached out, and I reached out to, her name's Jennifer, I believe is her name, and no response. So, I can get with Mark and see what our next step is, but no one's given back from her.
And then, I'm sorry, I have one more. Somebody asked me about the splash pad and with the power and everything. We're not signing off on any construction finalization right until next year, right, on all that stuff for the splash pad. I said I'd follow up, so, yeah. That's all I have. Thanks. We're up to department heads. Chief Denny?
I don't have anything. The only thing, did Cory, did you send anybody down there to look at those discs for the golf, the poles?
Yeah, I went down there myself.
And?
Who are they going to leave them? We're not going to move anything.
So, how am I supposed to handle it when he starts complaining next summer then, people in his yard?
I don't know. I mean, it's, it's between the ball field and the yard. It's not next to a yard.
Yes, it is. I was down there the day that frisbees were flying in his yard when he called me down there. And there was two frisbees that entered his yard when I was there.
You're probably, what, 15 yards away?
It doesn't matter. The point is, he's complaining about people coming onto his property. And it's something the village has put in.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what, what you're going to do.
No, it's what the village is going to do.
We're not going to move it. And I don't see a need to move it.
Well, then.
It'll be up against the, it'll be up against the fence of the field three there.
So, he's just supposed to allow people to come on his yard whenever they want because they throw a frisbee on there.
There's a couple houses down.
And they get hurt.
Couple houses down, there's a fence and they have, you know.
Yeah, I watched a frisbee go flying in that yard, too.
Private property sign up there, which, I don't know what the legalities are. But you live next to a park. I mean, baseballs have been in his yard before. I guarantee people have been over there to grab baseballs.
But this is a little bit different scenario than baseball. You've got a fence up and it's well away from the thing. Someone hits it over the fence, that's a different scenario. These are right on the property line almost. They're probably about 20 feet off his property line.
I drove back there the other day.
You have any experience with like people that live on golf courses? Because obviously, I've hit it and I can't even find the ball sometimes. But what's like.
A lot, I've heard.
Well, as often as I golf, yeah, probably a lot.
Well, I assume if you're, if you move onto a golf course, you're assuming that risk, right?
Okay.
In this case, though, it was put up after.
After, right.
He was there, so.
Is there never a speed of first being on baseball? I'm just trying to think how it would work. And where the baseball diamonds are at, every foul ball and every home run that went over the fence went into somebody's yard.
I, I can tell you from personal experience, being on Paul Lincoln Insurance, when a golf ball was hit into a yard, at Oglesby's Golf Course on number 13, I think it is, all right, they weren't allowed to go into people's yards to get the ball. Land somewhere.
It could probably, I, I would have to look at the actual case law, but I'm, it could probably be considered trespassing if they caused their object to go onto another person's land, although it might be different in the context of, of sports. But I don't know that.
Can you find that out and say what, we need to post a sign right where that, wherever that location is, like do not enter onto anyone's property.
Yeah. I think, I think the frisbee golf is an asset. I watched, I'm just saying,
we got that going on with some private property. I had one in my, it must have really threw it off. It was in my backyard, across the tracks. But then I watched you guys, when I was watching golf, they were, they were throwing it, two out of four people threw it at the road. You know, on Main Street there, over the fence and just chucking it down there. I, I throw it in the road. I'm terrible at frisbees. But then I saw them grabbing the bottom of the fence. And this was, what, yesterday? And they were pulling the fence up instead of walking around like they should. They were pulling the fence clear up and then climbing underneath it. So, maybe some of this stuff needs to be addressed with the overall aesthetics of where it's placed, I'm saying. Because if they're going to do it with that fence, then maybe they're going to do it with the new fences put in. The other guys I watched walked back around to the front, but they got something to look at. They were, they had the fence up. I was only kidding.
A new fence would have a guy wire under it so they ain't left them.
I get stuck under fence, I don't do that. I don't know about my wife.
Well, it's kind of tough to put, again, to harass a property owner. I mean, if I had people mired, I wouldn't like it.
Well, he had a good point. He says, well, I'm out there, he likes to do gardening. So, while I'm out there and I get head struck in the head, you know, because I'm not paying attention. Once someone trips over his edging around his trees, gets hurt. Obviously, you know, a lot of those, I'm just saying, they're going, they're into the varsity field. They're into softball field, I think, depending on the tone that is kind of tight back there.
And this is that guy's back here.
I know, I know.
You don't want nobody in it? There shouldn't be anybody in it. That's, that's a simple thing, right there.
Like I said, that came in after his property, not.
Take a look at Cory, you know, with Rachel. Fire chief, I'll go first there.
Yeah, I guess so. Good. Well, I don't have a whole lot to put in front of you guys or to say, but first of all, I do want to say this last couple weeks, or a week or two have been kind of hectic considering the incident on the corner here. But I do want to put out that I thought everybody, you know, accordingly to the situation, did great. There's always some negativity out there on the street as far as it being poorly done or certain things like that. But I just want to let know, I just wanted to be known that I thought Hicksville, Sherwood, and Farmer, these guys responded, and we did what we, what we were trained to do and what we knew how to do. And I thought we did it in a good manner despite the negativity out there. I just want to put that out there. Then I appreciate everybody's response. That was out there. Situation was tragic, to say the least, but I thought we did what we need to do. And if the situation happened again, in my opinion, I think we'd go the same direction and do what we need to do. So, I stand on that, but I just want to give thanks to everybody involved, even to Hicksville Police for their traffic controlling and, and trying to lower down the crowd. That was greatly appreciated. The flight people that came ultimately ended up not being needed, but I appreciate them willing to get in the air and come and see us as well. Outside of that, I want to mention, I handed Cheryl a paper shortly ago about the grant thing. I'm not going to get deep into it, but there was some miscommunication, obviously, and that's maybe for another conversation. As far as this whole thing goes, when I finally spoke to Mr. Smith, he led on to say that whoever he was in contact with had kind of made this decision as far as the, the length of truck, because he told me that it was, it was a side on the 75 footer. But when he finally talked to me, he said, I thought you were wanting a 100 footer. So, then again, miscommunication, kind of got behind the eight ball as far as some other work that needed to be done computer-wise. But this is what I received. The date doesn't really corroborate when I kind of got the email, but this is what's in front of y'all as far as the amount of money that we could get if we're granted. That 850,000, up to a million is what we could possibly give. It mentions up above it that five bigger cities will, larger career departments will receive probably most of that money as far as that goes. And just letting us know that if we do grant it, we, we will have to foot the remainder of, of that 1.6. But again, that 1.6 is a number, depending on the specification and the ladder, or whatever size that's determined. So, it could go anywhere from 1.3 to even above that, to 1.7. But when I talked to him over the phone, he told me that was the figure that was, that was almost determined as far as that goes. So, I just want to let y'all know that that is the, the amount that we won't get rewarded, the whole amount. But that is what would be left to the village if we decide to go through with that. The other thing is maybe for us in-house as far as uniforms, but I just want to put out there that, let you guys know that I'm looking to get all these guys geared up. In front of you is a quote of, of gear, top and bottom, the 3780, that's per set. I'm allowed, per budget, six sets a year. But the gentleman who came and outfitted said that he had a, a program that he could suit us out for 15 sets of gear at one time for a yearly price of 11.5, 11.4, 11.5 of an annual price. Now, I mention that because I'm allowed, I'm allowed 26, I'm allowed 22,600 per year for gear. But if I could pay an annual, one-year payment of 11.5, that's lower than the 22.6, and I'm getting double the amount of gear to outfit these guys out. It's a five-year payment thing. If it's something that Cheryl and I or the village or the money could suit it, I think it'd be beneficial. I didn't give the guy a definitive on if that's what, the way we wanted to go. But it's obviously the cheaper route. 15 sets would run us 56,000 and roughly $600 or $700. But if you break that down into five years, it's like 11.4, 11.3, something like that. As far as annual payment, it's just a way to get everybody suited out, and I don't have to worry about gear, or have to worry about coming to Cheryl for another six sets for the following year.
So, let me understand this correctly. What we would do is we would purchase 15 full sets, and we would pay for five years 11,500 each year?
Yep.
Okay.
So, my fear is, is that means we're all going to expire at the same time, right?
Well, no. Your gear, your gear is good. So, the domino effect to that is, if I bought 15 sets of gear right now, those 15 sets are good for 10 years, okay? So, then at five years, if I decide I needed more sets, that gear is still good for someone new coming in, or another five years for somebody else to have. That could fit into that gear. So, ultimately, my gear won't go south for 10 years, even if I decide that I need more gear. So, it's just more adding up every five years. But your gear is good for 10 years.
What's, what's, what are you saying that right now with volunteers? What's the number?
I have 20, I have 24 firemen total, and that's between all three levels.
Including yourself? Are you one of those 24?
I'm one of those 24.
Okay.
Well, I, I think I would make 25.
25, so 25.
Yeah. So, I have 25 firemen, and I have five guys that are expiring, and the end of 25 and everybody else expires in 26 and 27, as far as your gear goes. It was just an idea that I'm throwing out there. Like I said, me and Cheryl have been in brief conversations as far as what this could be. He's prepared to outfit 15 of us. Don't know if 15 of us could be available for that day that he comes, but he's always willing to come back and gear us out. But that is what he put in front of me when we talked. His next date coming is the 12th of December.
Where, where's he out of? Is he out of?
He, they have a physical office, but their main office is out of Dayton, and they have a, an office in Springfield, which is just 20 miles east of Dayton.
So, what gear, what gear do you have, I guess, has been the longest? When does it expire?
The longest gear that I know that I have expires in '28 and '29. So, roughly, so I have guys over.
So, less than five years?
I, yeah. I have people over here that expire right at the end of, or right before the five-year mark.
Do you know how many sets that is? That, that are good until then?
I don't have a definitive, but if I had to put it in numbers, I think six or seven people that expired between '28 and '29. I have five guys that expire at the end of '25, and I have three that expired in '26. So, this was just an idea. It's not something we have to go with. But I looked at as far as 22.6 per year versus 11.5 per year for five years. It's half the price, and I'm getting double amount of gear.
Where, where you get your 22 from? Where you get your 22 that you're talking about?
Because I, I, I put the six sets times, 3780 times.
I know, but you said, where's that in your budget?
Where in my budget? My budget, I.
Because I got last year's budget here, and I got this year's budget here. I'm trying to figure out where you're pulling it from.
Well, according to this young lady here, she had told me.
I'm not tonight.
She had told me.
The numbers don't jive. That's what I'm asking.
Well, the numbers may not jive to you as far as that goes, Bassett. But what I'm saying is, I'm going off, I'm going off what I'm allowed, what she said I was allowed to spend, which is a total of six sets. So, that's where I got the 22.6 from.
So, will this change? Cheryl?
She just got it a little bit. Yeah, she's just, she's talking.
So, previous, so previous years, even before I got in this position, I was told that, hey, the fire guys are allotted six sets of gear per year. That was before Kramer or whatever case may be. It didn't happen for the last couple of years. So, I just took, I just took the price of the gear that I was quoted, and I just timed it by six. And that's how I got the 22.6. And so, I'm assuming that that 22.6, if we didn't go this 15 sets of gear route, that will be there for that gear because that's what, budget-wise, that I'm allotted for each year, according to Cheryl. Okay? I'm allotted six sets per year. And that's where I got that number from. So, I'm not sure as far as financially.
Is it always a set and not a number, a figure? I'm surprised that it, it's like a flexible number.
Well, I, I do know.
Like a shirt and pants, it's a set. Well, right, but.
Then you don't say six sets a year, or, you know, let's say they're $10,000 each or, you, you just got $20,000 a year to spend towards, around here. But.
It's always been described as sets for them and not an actual number?
I'm not sure, because the last two years, we didn't even buy any.
Yeah, I mean, it's not even the budget wise.
Yeah, so he didn't buy. So, last time, the last. Yeah, so he didn't buy. So last time, the last time gear was bought was when Kramer was in. Kramer bought five sets, not six sets, but he bought five sets, and I think their total was almost, almost thirty, thirty-one thousand between those five sets or something in there, twenty-five to thirty thousand.
In a, in a previous meeting, didn't we say that even though we have a line item for uniforms or whatever, that we potentially could tap into capital because of-
Right.
Okay. So that may be where-
And they had ten sitting there to make sure.
And so my uniform allowance according to her was like eighty-seven something.
But the, I don't know exactly the numbers for that capital. I'd have to go back and look at the notes or watch the video, video of what we said.
Yeah, I thought the capital line item for that one was dealing more with the grant.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. And if, if that money's being used for that grant, which now we're seeing tonight, that instead of possibly owing a couple of hundred thousand, it could be eight hundred or seven hundred fifty thousand.
Right.
I don't, that's why I was asking, where's the extra money? Cause that money's already accounted for. You can't throw another twenty-seven thousand dollars or even eleven-five towards-
I understand now. Okay.
So are you saying that now there's not a gear allowance per year? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
It just doesn't show on our paper. I mean, yeah, these get sent out. Do you, do you look over all the line items?
I do. I looked at the previous one that she just gave me.
Like all the department heads, I'm, I'm hoping every department head looks at theirs, like then he looks at his and says, okay, capital outlay. Okay, I can buy, they, they must have approved this, this and this because there's not enough money in there for the plot cameras or for all new tasers or, you know, you guys look at these numbers and see what you guys have.
Yeah. At the beginning, when I looked at the capital outlay, it was four months ago, she gave me a number.
Oh, four months you had these?
Four or five months ago. When I, no, I, I mean, I looked at it more than, but when I initially got the numbers, she gave me my uniform amount that I had, and she gave me the capital outlay if I needed, whatever the case may be as far as this money has even come out of.
But if, but if you, if you buy the uniforms as they expire in, in the groups that you said, like three and five, and you've got plenty of money in the budget, if you buy it that way. But if you buy groups of fifteen or whatever, then you don't have a lot of money.
Five is going to be over fifteen thousand.
It's cheaper this way to do it.
Well, you only, you need three coming up and, and then-
Five is going to be the first one and that'll be over fifteen grand, and he only has ten in his line item.
Yeah, but we have general fund.
Right, but, and-
Oh, we do?
This eleven-five is-
This is just a conversation, guys. It's not, nothing that, that we need to decide on. I'll just bring it to y'all because when I looked at what gear would cost and what I was told that I'm allotted per year, six sets.
Cheryl says it's good.
During our annual one-year, during our annual one-year payment-
Cheryl likes the eleven-five.
Was less than eleven-five, was less than the twenty-two that it would cost. And that's always why I presented that to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's knock it out of there.
I do have a question though about the five that are getting ready to, um, expire or retire. Um, we, we have this gear before the end of the year or no?
They turn it on time, sixty days.
Oh, that's neat.
And that gear I thought expired at the end of twenty-twenty-five or is it the beginning of twenty-twenty-five?
There's someone that expires in July, and then there's a couple of people that expire towards, going towards the fall of next year, like this time next year.
So Cheryl, do we need anything to give them permission to-
I have a total of four guys who came to me and said their gear expires in twenty-five. Okay?
Well, the eleven-five-
You buy them in that group.
Right. But do we need to, do we need to make a decision tonight on the eleven-five then?
No, you don't need to make that decision. I'm telling you that you don't. You don't have to make that decision because this was just a conversation that I had with the gentleman. And when he said he'd come back on the twelfth, he, uh, he will, uh, address that, and I brought it to you guys. So when he does come on the twelfth, I can say, hey, we can pull the trigger or not. You know what I'm saying?
But you guys can still get measured?
Yes. Anybody can get measured, and my goal's also to get these guys, um, suited up for the Class A's as well. The same distributor, they, they do the same thing, and his cost is almost three hundred dollars less than Breakman's, which is in Fort Wayne, which is who they went to before as far as the Class A suits like to go to events or funerals or that sort of thing. So the same distributor is, is the same guy I'm dealing with with the gear. And he's willing to outfit us guys as well.
So these Class A's, isn't he buying them next year too? How much is that?
The Class A's haven't been bought in, in a while.
Why not? I'm just saying, if you buy next year, how much is it?
Well, um-
I think that would be coming out of uniforms and clothing, which is-
Yes.
Well, that's going to shoot that down.
Yeah.
So roughly, roughly Class A's, when he just gave me a number, roughly Class A's from top to bottom, hat to, to feet, five, six hundred dollars. Breakman's, according to what I was understanding, when Kramer bought from Breakman's, it was close to eight hundred dollars, if not more, per, per person. Yes.
Well, so I just want to make, I want to make the suggestion real quick.
Sure.
So if it were me in your position and, you know, you're going off of what people have told you.
No, just to the spokes-
No, no, no. Just, just hear me out here.
I'm sorry.
I don't always trust what I was told in the past, so I like to go to the source and get a price from the Breakman. Say, you know, what's your average price? Call them up on the phone and say, I'd like to outfit some officers. I'm looking at X number. What would the average cost be for the number of uniforms? See what the number is they give you on the phone. Get that person's name so you know who you talked to, and then you got a, a real number from them.
I did, I did-
Oh, you did? Okay.
But I didn't get a name, but I did speak to Breakman.
Okay. I didn't know-
He just roughly, he, he said they were busy. He just roughly said, a Class A uniform from head to toe will be close to eight hundred. That's all he said.
About eight hundred dollars for the jacket.
Okay. My, what, what I heard was that you'd heard from previous. I didn't know you called Breakman, so I probably-
No, I talked to Kramer also a while ago and asked him, because that's before I knew where he got the Class H from. Okay. So I spoke to Kramer, and he gave me a ballpark figure of what he paid.
Okay.
Okay. And then this gentleman that I was speaking with now, he gave me a ballpark price and said he will bring all that pricing when he comes on the twelfth of December.
Okay.
I have a question, Cheryl. Maybe you can answer this. Back to this brand. I thought we, we had told Mickey that we would not take less than one of the, so how do we proceed forward with that? Because he said that that would be fine.
Well, this Ryan, this Ross guy or whatever his name is, he is someone that I guess has been dealing with, uh, Mickey and you see a part on the email, he's CCD on whatever the email was.
Right, but it's Mickey's company.
That, that's fine, but he, he is dealing, he has some kind of partner with Mickey or somehow or whatever, cause he's been the one that kind of talked to me. And actually, when I got the call, I don't know how your name popped up, maybe you were passing through to me, but when he called me a few weeks ago, it popped up with your name. And I was like, what is she doing calling me? You know what I'm saying? I was like, all right. So I answered and it was him. So I'm not sure if you passed him through, but he had told me, and that's why I thought that, oh, okay. He goes, well, have the council people talk to you about what's going on.
Yeah, I'll get ahold of Mickey.
And I said, no.
Yeah, cause it was specifically written into that agreement.
And that's why I said, I think there's been, uh, communication issues because I wasn't aware that a decision was made on the ladder and, and all that sort of thing.
Cheryl, leave a copy of the contract with first responsible. If you could forward that to me, and then I'll give Mickey a call this week and clarify. Because we had told them a million dollars, right?
Yes.
That's three of us, yeah. And eight fifty is not a million dollars. So the hundred fifty, you know, we can't, we can't just say we're going to do one thing and then, you know, cut, cut the budget like that or cut the number like that.
I get that. So when you make contact, please this time, call me on the phone or-
Call you on the phone?
Call me, do anything. If I'm at work or not available, please leave me a message and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I promise you.
Uh, email. I, I, I prefer email because it's documented.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
I'll, I'll be on the look. Just send me a smoke signal.
Yep.
That you send an email.
Yep.
Okay. And then we, we go from there.
Okay.
Other than that, guys, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm doing and making my strides to, to make the department next door better. Um, and I think we're making good move. We got a lot of great people within the department, and my hope is that we continue to move and able to service the community, uh, like, like we need to and eventually have respect of everybody as far as that goes. I'm just speaking on the negative that's out there. So for the village that's listening, you know, Will, here it is. You know, us as a department, we're making strides to get better.
I know you're working on it, Derek, and we appreciate that. So-
All right. So that's all I have.
Can you have a question, Ken?
Dude, I tried.
No.
Well, you kept.
Move on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Derek.
All right. Excuse me.
Bruce?
Before I start, I'd like to say happy birthday to somebody in here.
Oh, you did it.
Whose birthday is that?
Nobody.
Should we sing happy birthday? Nobody's birthday.
So just to let you guys know, um, uh, I took a look at our Med account, uh, to see where we're at. We've taken in a hundred and seven thousand dollars so far this year, um, which is, uh, about seventeen thousand in what we took in last year. So we are well over, you know, they're, they're doing their job. Um, so far we've had twenty-nine calls for the, for the month, uh, that's both fire and EMS. Six-thirty for the year. Um, I did take my instructor class test today, uh, for the state, and I did pass that. So, um, within the week, after I get, get the certification from the state, I will be a full-fledged instructor now. Um, I do have a name to bring to you. He comes to us from Williams County. Um, he's a Brian firefighter. He's also an EMTB. Um, his name is Eric McLean, and, uh, just putting it out there that this may not be the last one that wants to come join us from, from there. But, uh, when I talked to him, I did tell him, you know, we're about, about us, you know, wanting more weekends than anything, and he was fine with that. Um, as far as hiring the two, uh, after talking with Cheryl, Cheryl said that I could do one, um, for now, which she will start next Monday, and then the other one, um, will start at, after the beginning of the year. And I said, I'll, I'll take what I can get. So, but, uh, like I said, I do have Eric McLean, um, that I'd like to present for-
For part-time.
For part-time.
This will take your open spot?
This will take one, yes, some open spots. See, the problem, the, the problem is, is that, um, the problem is, is that, you know, you get, you get some of these people that are working somewhere else. So they, they're, they're sometimes scheduled for the weekend. So, you know, we're trying to, it's, it's a delicate balance trying to get everybody scheduled on, on the weekends. You know, once we, um, once we get him and once, once I get, uh, the, the new one next week, um, I'm gonna, you know, I will take a look and see where we're at. But, uh, talking with Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl was all right with it. So, cause I, obviously I asked her before I could, before I did anything.
Question on your Med account thing.
Sure.
So you said seventeen thousand dollars more than this time last year?
I'm pretty sure that's what we've had.
But our call volumes, like, not double, but it's, it's one of a lot. So how, how are they getting more money?
When did we start collecting this year?
We didn't-
I know they were supposed to go back and start.
So they, they went back to, they went back to the, to, uh, to January because, because, um, you can't, because of the issue, we couldn't go back any further than that.
Okay. But so it's eleven, or you know, ten and a half months. Our call volume's not doubled, but it's one of two hundred runs a year.
Right.
Seventeen thousand dollars more collected, it doesn't seem that much more.
Well, I, um, I will say this, that the adjustments, just the, the, just the adjustments, you know, thanks to, you know, our friends in DC, um, our adjustments pretty much equal what we took in last year. Our, our adjustments is eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, so if you take that into consideration, you've got a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that, you know, that basically they have brought in, but the adjustments, you know, thanks to Medicaid Med account or Medicaid Medicare, um, makes that, uh, makes it, you know, that much less.
But they still pay mileage no matter what, right?
Oh, yeah. 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 They're, they're, they're paying them. Well, they're, they're paying mileage, but, but they're paying at their, at, you know, at their rate, you know? They may not pay the full fifteen dollars per mile that, that we charge, um, but they are being, but they are being charged mileage, yes.
Is, is this money that you're talking, is this, they wrote a check and sent it to Cheryl, or they just told you this is what we collected?
This is, this is what is on their, on our website that, that I get, that I actually every, almost every day to see if, to see if, uh, what, where we're at as far as-
But is it, is it in her hands?
I have a spreadsheet.
But I mean, you have, they've paid us. They have paid this village what he's talking. So they're just saying we collected this.
Talking about the insurance companies have paid the village.
Yeah, they're-
They either pay some to Med account, they pay the rest to Medicare, depending on what address they're sending it to.
Right.
Add them together.
That's a fair shot.
And that's insurance money, not Med account money.
Right.
We're paying them money.
Right.
But I have a spreadsheet if anybody wants to-
Well, the main thing I'm looking at is this, it seemed like for thirty, sixty, ninety days when it first started, they were saying, we've collected this much, but they never sent it. And, but now, now what they're saying they've collected, it's getting paid out and dispersed and you're getting your fair share. That's all I wanted to know.
And then I check the numbers every month to make sure we're all in balance on a spreadsheet that you can look at anytime.
I talked to Cheryl a little bit about it and I actually called Med account just to see how things are going on their end. She said, um, Bruce and Cheryl were easy to work with, one of the better towns, but then she goes, also like to come after a year to get everything worked out, all the bugs and whistles and everything. Um, then she would like to come to council probably in March and just present what their findings are and just kind of make sure we're all on the same page. So, you know, that was the record, but I thought was promising. So.
Is the guy from, I think it's St. Joe, is he running now?
Yes, he is. Yeah. He, uh, he was able, uh, we got his reciprocity, I think, uh, two weeks ago, and he's been doing some for a long time, you know? Uh, he is brand new. So, yeah, he's got to do some for a long time, um, cause we just can't throw him under the fire. So he, but, uh-
Yeah, we can.
I mean, we could, but, you know, I'd rather not. Cause then I get full calls.
You have to make recommendations.
Yeah. I think it's promising. You're getting some new people, um, you know, gentlemen here in town and some of these other people in, at our full time. So, um, I would like to recommend, uh, the council hiring Eric McLean as a part-time. I guess go through all the background checks or is that like anybody else with that, physical? So we've got, uh, yeah, I mean, we've got his copies from his, of the background checks and physicals from- Cause he currently runs-
Nice support to Mary's.
But what level is he at? Is he a, is he a basic?
Yeah. I would, trust me, I, I would love, I would love to get more Mary's.
And do we know how the other, um, part, the basics, the fire, young firemen that are not young, some-
They're, they're doing very well.
They're all staying on task, cause they're seven.
Seven, yeah.
They're, they're doing well. Um, in fact, uh, the advanced class that's going on, they're taking a midterm test right now. Um, so they were kind of sweating bullets on that. But, uh, you know, for the most part, everybody's doing well and, uh, you know, I've always said to any of them that they can come, come to me or, you know, or go to a more experienced EMT if they, if they struggle at all.
And these guys are all seven are firemen, right?
Yes.
And that's, I mean, I think that's a blessing to have the firemen at the scene and having the basic training underneath them. So, so I'll make our recommendation for Eric McLean as part-time.
I made a recommendation?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egling?
Yes.
You just bring a couple each meeting time and we'll get them on.
So real quick with this new full-time that we're going to try to onboard this year. When we run the ad for that, Cheryl, can we specify, we're looking to have someone start by the end of this year and then, and that way we don't, we could hire, or we could interview potentially- and then that way, we don't, we could hire, or we could interview potentially next year's spot so we don't have to continue to kick the can down the road?
Yeah, you can do that anytime.
Okay. So, when the ad's written, we should probably have it stated that, you know, we have one position that's going to be available by the end of this year.
January 7th.
Well, yeah, the first one will be this year, and the other one will be at the beginning of next year.
He said they're starting Monday, though.
Right, they're hiring from within, though, right?
We're, yeah.
They're not.
Do you, do you have to post it?
No.
I would think so, which I would think that means they can't start Monday.
That's a Rachel question.
I got discussed last meeting.
Because last time this happened, we didn't do it the right way. We need to do it the right way just to make sure that we got our butts covered.
Because I, I brought this up at the last meeting and...
She said no, okay.
Because they're going, they're already an employee, and they're going just part-time to full-time. Just increasing their FTEs, that's okay.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
Good job. Thank you, Rachel.
So, then we still need to run the ad that we have one starting...
For the part-time and for next year.
So, so it'll be, it'll be part-time, but the, uh, but the second one coming at the beginning of next year is also a part-timer now.
Chloe, we already got a full position.
She's saying to apply for the Eric McLean one, hiring for a part-time position. Does that need to be advertised? It's not within?
Advertised for part-time and full-time. You don't know what you're going to have next January.
No one's going to start sooner, though, the part-timer. Not after first...
How, did we advertise before for part-time?
I thought we were already advertising that.
I think the others, Cheryl, we advertised it before that.
Earlier in the year with, yeah, we threw a couple ads out there, and then it's on their...
Theoretically, they could run as a volunteer until the position opened up.
Theoretically.
But don't you have it on your...
And then we would hire from within.
We could strike your straw bill.
Charles, Charles off the field, right? Charles gone.
Is that it?
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, fiscal offer, Cheryl.
I have the fund status report and have summary by funds.
Yes.
Which ones?
Uh, well, appropriations. He'd ask us to come with stuff, and I don't want anyone to be blindsided. So, you guys have a chance to look over all the budgets. There's a lot, there's some items when finance met that we were not in favor of, but it's still in the budget. Some were part, it's general fund money part, whether or not one full-time park director. If there is a full-time park director, what the pension is, what the insurance is. There's also a chunk of money for capital outlay, and there's a list of items that Corey was looking to do with that money. There's items in there like insulating the maintenance building, which the finance committee was not in favor of. I spent a lot of kind of money on it. Same thing for some of the fencing. We talked about HBA being possibly responsible for paying for part of the backstop replacements, wrapping the shelter house, concession building, and same thing when it come to the civilian, fencing on the hill, some removal of exterior stone. Just want to make sure you guys are all aware of that being part of the budget. So, you guys are all okay with that general fund money being spent now as...
I was surprised that it was wrapped into that because how does that work? If the finance committee is bringing that forward as we don't recommend it? It still makes it in to the budget? How's that work?
You have, if you look over on the side of the general fund total, you see the estimated resources?
For part?
For part, no, for general fund. They're not broken down only as general fund. Come up to there before page...
Okay, so it'd be on page five. Well, kind of, there's a personal one right here.
All right. The number on the far right is my estimated resources for 2025, and the number bold beside it is convention for 2025.
And it got to be within two months, otherwise you're not eligible to prove it.
Correct. Two months of expenditures can be your cushion. So, if you do not want to put any money into some category like civilian or whatever, where do you put the money?
Because it has to go somewhere.
Because we're under my estimated resources by a nice chunk.
The money has to go somewhere.
Yes, exactly. Within...
Right. Within the general fund, but, I mean, right now, we don't know exactly what's going on with the pool opening. The pool opening, the bid openings next Thursday, so... That kind of throws us in...
The determining factor.
On whether or not we need a full-time park director.
Well, the numbers that are put in through pool include a part-time, I mean, a full-time park director who's paid as a laborer one for a year, and two part-timers, seasonal alone. And our expected expenses through the pool. We have no idea how close we're going to come, but we only had to do our best guess. And I put it for the employees, if we do get a full-time person, they want family insurance, I put it in the budget already.
Worst-case scenario?
Right.
I know you don't like...
And the money to run the splash pad is in with the pool. I did not make a separate account for it. And so, hopefully, we'll be all good together.
So, that would be like utilities and operating supplies?
Yes.
I just know, general fund, I know you don't like to spend it towards certain items like fire, EMS, but, I mean, it comes out of police, police also have a general fund, but I know they're supposed to use their levy money and stuff. But, you know, when we're talking turn-on gear and making sure we have enough money or something that they need versus replacing some items I don't think needs.
Do you have the money to pay for those things they need?
You know, it's sad, a grade one laborer and a paramedic make the same money. Somebody that goes through all that school and learns all that stuff, and you should know because you went through it all. And as opposed to some guy that can lean on a shovel, and they're making the same money.
They don't just lean on a shovel.
You know, yeah.
But I hope you see what I'm saying.
I just wanted you guys to see what some of the capital outlay was because I know you guys aren't all on finance, so you don't set through all the same meetings. And I know I spoke with Corey on it, and I know we've talked about it, which is, you see, things be preaching.
Is the resurfacing of the parking lot, was that in...
It's in this religious and... It's not, it's not...
I know, but is it in here, though? Is it in your budget sum?
It'd be in capital. Part of the capital.
Okay. Yeah, I need it there, yeah. I know we have to spend a certain amount of money, but it, I struggle when these are really... We have a bunch of big projects coming, and I'd like to kind of be able to nest egg for those big projects.
What projects besides if we...
Yeah, cool. And all of the wages and...
Pay off the ambulance loan?
Be able to...
That's already in the budget.
Well, the monthly, the monthly payment is, but not to pay off the, the rest of it.
Well, the extra 100 and 150 for the fire truck. We're talking about if we have to make up that difference plus the actual difference.
But you'll have a couple, up to five years to do that, too.
We got, we're still going to do the Finance Avenue, aren't we?
Yeah.
First, we can see if we can get some grant from there.
Now, Cheryl, we come in here and you tell us we're spending a lot of money, and we're trying to find ways not to spend money, and you're talking us out of it. I really, I don't understand it, I got to be honest.
I'm, I'm good with these numbers. I'm good with these numbers for 2025.
There's a lot of wants in, in those numbers.
And I guess my question is, don't take it wrong, Corey, we don't give full-time park directors. So, does that mean we're automatically getting one if we approve the budget the way it is?
Well, no, because we did last year. Last year, we did the same thing. We, we had budget for a full-time park director.
But then that's money not getting spent. Won't the auditor find that?
No.
As long as it's appropriated.
It's appropriated, yeah.
Well, no.
Do your gavel thing.
The bad thing is you can't take the money in...
But, but no question.
I just do fund accounting to read so you could understand what I did.
Yeah.
Where y'all read it.
Yes, but I'm just saying, if that's in there, and I'm not just picking on Corey, any department head's going to spend every nickel they got.
Trust me, I know.
Well, so now we're back to you don't want them spending it. But then, we got to give them money so they can spend it.
Well, the bad thing is you can't earmark it for something and put it in a line item because then you can't spend it on anything else.
Right.
So, that's the bad thing about it.
Why isn't it going to get roped into having way more employees than what we need and then hearing about it later?
Like tonight, we voted on, you know, a full-timer, part-timer, they got to apply for an ad, and we have council last October.
Yeah.
So, we did last year, we had, but Corey had budget for a full-time park director because we thought possibly the pool and the splash pad was going to get both voted on. And since only one did, we didn't fill it.
Yeah, but when you throw those in, and then something comes up a year or so later, and they go, "Well, you voted for it, you approved it." It's, it's, it's a matter of record, you approved it.
I just wanted to clarify because a lot of times, you, all of a sudden, you say, "Corey, why'd you spend money on that?" Or, "Corey, why'd you spend on part of the budget?" And he has them all spelled out of what he wants to spend it on, and just want to make sure everyone's aware.
Kind of like the street sweeper. I mean, you know, that's kind of been a hot topic about whether or not we could get the street sweeper. Well, I mean, I feel like the street sweeper should trump fencing.
And he has money set aside...
And it's supposed to both be general fund, right? Right, and he's the saving for it.
No, uh, no, because that comes out of...
Street sweeper wouldn't. You couldn't use...
You could, but he has money from sewer water refuse that he can be able to... Well, not, no, streets, streets, refuges, and...
The ordinances that we just approved for like water and sewer and refuges, okay? We raised the rates, and the money's there for those departments. So, when you go to buy a street sweeper, what's the, what category can a street sweeper come out of? Please enlighten me. No, I mean, what department? Like, what's, we got revenue coming in, what can we, what...
Streets.
It's big on coverings.
It can come out of capital, it can come out of refuges, come out of ground.
And how do those accounts look, refuges? How's, how's refuges look?
That he could pay cash for it.
Okay. So, that, I guess that's the thing that, it just frustrates me because I understand, I guess, why it is the way it is. It's not, unfortunately, I feel like we do need EMS more than a street sweeper, but...
Yeah, we can pay cash for a street sweeper, but we could only hire one of the two girls.
But your street sweeper over the fencing, though, if that's, you're going to have to get very creative with the street sweeper to make sure that you can get that. We've talked about that.
Not too creative.
Okay, I just want to make sure that he's able to get that because that is definitely something that he's been tucking money back away to get.
The biggest thing is we need to run the ad for the full-time EMT personnel. And then have it in there that, because we're adding one full-time, right? And legally, we have to run an ad, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, not for the lateral.
Yeah.
Not for them. But I thought it was a position that we created. Or how many?
Advertising for part-time.
Okay.
Hopefully, weekends.
So, like, I moved a lateral four years ago, five years ago, when I first took over, I moved a lateral part-time to a full-time position without having to advertise for that spot.
But was it a new full-time position?
No.
Was it an open full-time?
It was an open...
Open lateral.
Okay. So, we have an open full-time EMT position. All right? All right? Okay.
Now, we need part-timers.
Okay.
Now, back to the pool. What, you're going to ask me to vote on a $3 million pool? I'm sorry, I'm going to be a hard question.
A girl will be in tears. So, y'all be nice and just ask all your questions tonight.
Okay.
But we're here for it.
So, that's in the budget if we approve a three and a half million dollar pool that we'll lose money on every year, and you'll have to come up with, is it going to make money? No.
No.
The village needs to be well-run.
That doesn't mean going into debt.
The land school didn't cause us to go into debt.
We lost 25 to 30,000 a year on that.
It didn't cause us to go into debt.
In the 50s and the 60s and the 70s, we did? Do you have those numbers? I'm just asking.
Yeah. You have to die in college.
These don't make money. They're not, they don't. We got to beef up our concession stands. That's, how do you think theaters make money?
So, does it matter what the pool bid comes in at? You guys got to vote yes regardless?
No.
No, we don't have, we don't have the information in front of us, though, Kat. The information's not present. That's the whole point of the pool opening bid.
But I'm not going to make my decision based on the fact that pools don't make money. I know that before we put the bid out. Pools don't make money. That's not a secret.
But every year, you're going to have to make sure you've got operating money.
Yeah, water park doesn't make us any money. I mean, it's, it's one of those things. Village doesn't make us money. None of those items make us money. It's a...
I'm just afraid you're going to overextend yourself someday. Then everybody's going to be scratching their heads. How did this come to be?
Well, that goes back, I'm sorry, Cheryl, but that goes...
I have a spreadsheet.
You've projected all that out with all the loan debt for a pool, and you're waiting for the bid, but we rely on Cheryl to run those numbers day in, day out on, on all that stuff online.
And if the economy takes a 2008 dunk, then who's going to be saying, "Oh..."
But did we survive in 2008, though?
We laid off, we fired, we made a lot of cuts, we got rid of a little contingency we had between...
Yep, we cut...
So, don't give me that.
If it happens.
Sorry. Well, yeah, if. Do you run your household that way?
Nope.
I hope not, or your businesses, but whatever.
I got a good friend that is filthy, filthy rich.
You have friends?
Well, two.
Talk about bonding.
They're here.
And he says if you have to borrow money to operate your business, you need to shut down. And we're borrowing mon, this, this town is a business. And, and we're borrowing money to buy ambulances and stuff.
So, what you're saying is if you want to start a business and you have to borrow money for it, you shouldn't open the business?
If you have to keep borrowing money to keep the business afloat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
And that would, that would be every, every business that's came to the revolving loan to borrow money.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, because some of them are long-time businesses. Right, that's what a pool could be, is in addition to...
Things are way off-topic.
I mean, public safety is not a business.
No, public safety's not. But we kind, where they're kind of just saying, "Well, we don't need that, let's go get a pool." Go hire two girls, go get a pool.
My personal feeling is we're going to need a pool because we got to invest in our employees and other things.
Yeah.
Insurance.
That's where back, let's say we vote the pool down, it's... How's that going to make these numbers look? Because you're probably going to change the budget a little, you know? Which won't that increase that deficit between general fund, what you're taking in and what you're spending? Or you got to leave it the same?
So, you six are going to decide we're never having a pool. Never.
Didn't say never, said not now.
No, I'm just saying, will that affect your budget numbers on general fund? As far as with the auditor? Okay, well, that's fine, that's, I thought if that's going, if it gets voted down, if that's going to widen that gap, then we got to shift the money somewhere else. If you're okay with it...
If you pass, pass this right here next time. Nothing on here is going to happen unless it comes to you to get a vote.
But why would we leave a $3 million pool in the budget if we know we're not going to build it?
Oh, my God.
I don't think that's a dumb question.
Well, the $3 million...
So, you just pad in the budget?
No.
Oh, well.
What if you decide to, you go with a pool?
You have to have the money there in case you do.
Yeah, but we're voting probably next meeting, all right?
We got a little... For a second.
No, I'm just saying, if it doesn't change the budget any, fine.
Well, this year, we had all the money in there for it, and someone, I don't know at this table, said, "Go find me $271,000 somewhere. Doesn't matter where, just go scrape it up and write a check."
For the ambulance?
No.
Yeah, yeah, it was for the ambulance, which we have.
All of the numbers for the splash pad.
And we did that, we did that, too. And we did that, didn't we?
Two hundred and twenty thousand out of our pocket. Just find money.
Cheryl's good at that.
Well, you found money for a quarter million dollar camera truck that I seen it once.
That's completely different.
You know, there's a lot of things that happen.
Full circle.
I think she can find me some money?
Yeah, I understand.
I just don't want to see that getting too much and then people are going, oh, how did this ever happen? So now, Cheryl, answer my question, I'm fine, I'm not mad at anybody.
That's what we're here for, ask questions. I mean, we wanted to bring this out to the table, questions on the budget for next year, and that's what we're doing, so.
We just want to ask, well, Cheryl's here.
Absolutely.
She's scheduled next meeting.
Well, while you're talking money, let me ask you this.
Don't call me names, I'm crazy when I'm not here.
Cheryl, I had a couple people email me, text me.
Do they have names?
My name, my name. And they said that since the hospital closed and she's, two she's, and they said, is it, do the trustees pay anything to the hospital? The township's paid, do they pay into the hospital? Anything?
Yeah.
Technically, you got to.
Maybe they're paying for that, no?
Well, this, these two thought that since they're not having to pay into the hospitals anymore to keep it, you know, afloat, from their end of it, maybe they should pay into us.
So the township, the township should pay into us?
Trustees never paid into the hospital.
There was a levy.
That does bring up a good point. But no.
Do they have EMS?
No. No, this is on property tax, we're still paying a levy on the hospital, but if the hospital's no longer in business, should we find out if that levy should go away?
I asked that question to Mill Cherry that night when he gave his presentation, he didn't even know there was a levy out there.
Well, no, I'm just, I just threw that out there.
I think it's one more year, too.
Well, to me, that's a Jill Lott question.
I have no idea where you're at.
I think there's one more year off.
Is that a county wire or village only?
That, I think that was all, all the township and the village for paying on the hospital.
Yes.
But if, but if that can go away.
Because I asked you, because you were on the board at the time, too, about it. I thought it went towards certain specific items.
Capital projects.
Could it go away or could it go into?
No, it's had to stay in capital projects.
It's their levy towards that, you can't change the.
That could have gone in the levy.
Oh, for the place being closed is kind of where they get so.
Well, that's what I mean.
That's what I asked him that night.
But when we make our tax payments, we're paying for the previous year, correct, Cheryl? When you pay, write a check for your property taxes, you're paying for, you know, this year, I'm paying for 2023. So all we got to do is talk to Jill Little and when you get to your tax bill, if it's a lot less, it should be because of that money that you're not going to be able, they can't collect that money for the tax, for the tax year of 2024. In 2025, you're going to be paying on the tax year of 2024, right, Cheryl?
On the levies.
On the levies.
Twenty-five?
Yep.
And twenty-four?
Right. Right. So like this year, when you write a property or a check to the, you're paying for 2023 taxes.
Is that what we need to have Rachel looking?
Hold on, when the hospital was still open, right?
And I was thinking, I'm here. I can call him, I know Jill.
I mean, all we got to do is.
I don't understand, I'll bring him down and ask him, yeah, that's. I don't think I can, so.
Well, Ron, you were talking about the townships paying us, we have contracts with the townships for our EMS.
Yes, yes, but we base that all on a thirty-minute run.
True.
Well, yeah, but it.
It was triple.
Everything has changed.
Well, they, fortunately, it's a contract, you'd have to go back in and.
Change the contract.
And ask them if they would change.
Yeah.
I'm kind of okay bringing them to the table to see if they will.
Well, I actually was talking, it was one of you two today, about bringing that up maybe for somebody. Well, we should look, if the contract was written while the hospital was still open and it's written in the contract that.
I don't think that is, I don't, I don't think that part of it.
We have to read through the entire.
I will say, I will say this, there's nothing in there that says that if the hospital's open.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It just says, it just says that we're going to charge you this amount of money for the run. It doesn't, there's nothing in there that says, you know, it's only, and we're only transporting to CMH. Because there was plenty of times when CMH was open, like if we get up to the northern part of our territory, that we were still going to Bryan. Because that's where, you know, like a lot of Milford and, you know, Farmer.
Yeah, but the majority of your runs went right down there.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, ninety-five percent went right down there. Now, now eighty, probably eighty-five percent of our runs are going to.
Somebody should get with all those townships and bring them to the table and ask them.
Right, I just can't listen to two people at the same time.
This is me.
Well, I want to let him finish and then I'll listen to you.
I was just, I was just saying that eighty-five percent of our runs are now pretty much going to Fort Wayne.
Right. Okay, now he stopped, what were you saying?
I'm telling you now. When do those contracts come up?
Your year, I thought, or three-year. With an increase each year. Five percent increase, I think? Sure. I think it was five.
I don't think it's that much of the dollar amount, not a percentage.
I, I, I will say this, I agree with Ron, I think that we, I think that we, as not only you guys, but us as EMS, need to sit down with the townships and just say, hey, look, this is what, you guys know what's happening. You guys know what happened. This is, this has made our costs rise astronomically and, and just say, and just ask if there's any way that we can redo the contracts, you know? And like if, if somebody's coming to you and saying that they've been paying into the hospital, well, again, can that money be used here?
Yeah.
It needs asked. One of the things that we used to get was we would get a breakdown each month, each township, and how many runs were in each. And then there'd be like a total for, you know, year to date. I'd like to kind of see where are these runs coming from. If we're the one who are, if most of these calls are right here in town, I don't know that they should, you know, catch that burden. And I know that we do a lot here, but if, you know, more with the increase, I guess.
Well, part of the, part of the problem that, and I'm, and I'm not going to totally disagree with you, but part of the problem is this, okay? If that was the case, then our squads would never leave the confines of the village of Hicksville because, because the village of Hicksville pays a majority and pays really the most for us. So for us to go back and say, hey, yes, we've had X amount, we can't get, we, we don't know if all of a sudden we get, we, we went, we, we had, let's say, twenty runs to Farmer Township, but next year, we've got a hundred, but we based it upon the twenty.
Oh, no, no, I, I just think it'd be a good idea for us to see those numbers. I don't want us to base what we're asking for, I, I just want to see it. We had gotten those numbers in the past and where those runs came out of, I just think it's good information for us to know.
I know every quarter, we have to, I give Cheryl a breakdown so that way she can send the money.
I have a spreadsheet. You got a spreadsheet for that?
I have a spreadsheet.
I, you're going to get an email from me asking for a lot of spreadsheets tomorrow.
We just talked about that.
All right. Where we at here, everybody?
Mayor's report.
Mayor's report, are you sure? You don't want to adjourn first? I read that with Cheryl, questions are out and that's what we wanted to bring out.
Is anybody going to check in with trustees?
I have called. In fact, me and Bruce met, no, it wasn't, we did the contracts, but we talked to a couple of them, but.
I didn't do the contracts.
No, Cheryl wrote them and I took some and I know another EMT did, so we'll follow up with it. I will call and get with, maybe Bruce can help me with that, get in contact with the township trustees, so. Good. Christmas crew through starts, the kickoff is Tuesday, I believe the twenty-eighth, or twenty-seventh, November twenty-eighth, it starts up through the twenty-ninth of December. It starts at six to nine at Defiance County Fairgrounds. I know they have a sign-up sheet if you can help volunteer to help work down there and or enjoy the Christmas lights, they spent a lot of hard work and time putting those together again for us this year. The Hicksville Fire and EMS departments again are doing the Christmas, children's Christmas again this year. I believe the barrels are out, they're dropped off at various businesses in the community. You can drop off a gift or you can give a monetary donation to the Hicksville Fireman Association. On their Facebook page, it's got detailed information on how to write out the check to them if you do like to give some money. But again, they're working on that again this year and we appreciate that for the families and the kids that are in need. Deadlines for the families to sign up, though, for the giveaway is November twenty-fifth. I think there's a form out here, supposed to be a form out here you can pick up or online, I believe you can fill one out and submit it, so to get that done for them. Kristi Mack from the Defiance Visitors Bureau stopped in, they're working on a, they're hiring a production company, filming company to come in and do more of a broad marketing tool for the county and also for individual communities. Once she does it, different things, they're putting the package together to promote Defiance County and then also the villages and cities inside Defiance County. She is asking for some funds, so to help pay for this company, so I asked her to come